More technology on that table?
Mainframe.
Okay, we will call this meeting of the Town Council to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could ask everyone for a brief moment of silence in recognition of those and veterans who have passed. And I do have a few condolences that I would like to read into the record tonight. Condolences go out to the, to the family of George Buck Jordan upon his passing on June 12th, 2019. Mr. Jordan served in the United States Navy during World War II. He was a member of the Bridgewater Fire Department from 1946 until his appointment in 1950 to the United States Navy Fire Department at South Weymouth Naval Air Station. Also, our condolences go out to the family of James D. Lucas upon his passing on June 2nd, 2019. Mr. Lucas served the United States Army during the Vietnam War. Our condolences also go out to the family of David E. Cox upon his passing on June 7th, 2019. Mr. Cox served in the United States Air Force during the Korean War. He was very active in the community for several years, serving on the Bridgewater Recreation Commission for over 40 years and is a longtime member of the Bridgewater Lions Club, serving as president and then as district governor. Thank you. First, we have, welcome everybody to our meeting this Tuesday, June 25th, 2019. We have quite a bit on the agenda tonight. So we'll go right to the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting of June 4th, 2019.
Move.
There's a motion. There's a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I will abstain because I was not at that meeting.
I also abstain.
Two extensions. Announcements from the President. I have a couple announcements, um, tonight. Uh, well, actually just one. Volunteers are still and always needed to deliver meals on wheels here in Bridgewater. Uh, please contact the Bridgewater Senior Center at 508-697-0929. That's 697-0929. Um, a small stipend for mileage reimbursement will be given to those by the old colony elderly services for those interested in, in, um, helping out delivering meals on wheels. We do not have any proclamations this evening. Citizens' open forum. Are there any citizens here wishing to speak in the citizens' open forum portion of this meeting? Any citizen at all? Seeing none? I will close that portion of the meeting and go to our appointments under E. We have appointment to the Open Space Committee of Eileen Harnie. Hiney, um, I'll refer to the town manager on this appointment.
Mr. President, Ms. Hiney has, uh, put herself forward for the Open Space Committee. She's, uh, got an extensive experience with, uh, environmental issues and, and has recently retired from work with the, uh, Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So I would hardly recommend her appointment to the Open Space Committee.
Motion to appoint.
There's a motion and there's a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Uh, Mr. Columbodis?
I, I would just like to say I can't imagine a better candidate for the Open Space Committee. I know Ms. Hiney and, uh, she's a lawyer also, which is probably could come in handy. Um, so I'm looking forward to her helping out. Thanks.
Very good. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome to the Open Space Committee. Cultural Council, Karen Peabody.
Mr. President, Ms. Peabody has, uh, put herself forward for the Cultural Council. Uh, she also has, uh, a fair amount of experience in, um, in, uh, social, uh, work and social issues and would be a perfect fit for the Cultural Council. So I encourage you to, uh, ratify her appointment.
Motion to appoint.
There's a motion. This is, there's a second to appoint. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome to the Cultural Council. Planning Board Alternate Member, William Akins.
Mr. President, Mr. Akins has, uh, lived in Bridgewater a relatively short time, but he is, uh, very interested in learning more about, uh, the town and, uh, and he has, uh, expressed an interest in being an alternate member, not a full member, but an alternate member of the Planning Board at this time. So I would encourage you to ratify that appointment.
Motion to appoint.
There's a motion and there's a second to, uh, approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Welcome to the Planning Board as an alternate member. The time being 7:35. Our first, um, hearing this evening. Order FY19029, a loan order, to amend the loan order of, uh, FY19041. At their meeting held on June 10th, 2019, the Finance Committee voted five to zero to recommend approval. The Budget and Finance Committee, uh, met this evening and will provide their disposition to the full council in a moment. This measure has been duly advertised for a, for a public hearing in the enterprise and on the town's website. Therefore, this measure may be finally considered at the conclusion of the hearing pending a disposition from the Budget and Finance Committee. I'll refer to the Chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee, Counselor Wood, to give us an update on that vote.
Thank you. Um, in simple terms, we, um, we voted three zero to, uh, recommend this to the full council.
Thank you. With the hearing being open, is there anyone here from the public that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this loan order? Is the petitioner present that would like to make a presentation of this? I'll refer to the town manager on this.
Uh, Mr. President, I will give you a brief presentation. The, um, amendment to the loan order is, uh, for an additional $1 million for the Elm Street project. Originally, the council had authorized 6.5 million and, uh, and we are requesting 7.5 million. Um, having said that, I do want to let you know that we had a bid opening last Thursday. Um, the bids, uh, top three bids, top two bids, well, I should say the lowest two bids, uh, came in, uh, just a little bit below the, the appropriation of 6.5. Um, however, in order to accommodate, um, any contingencies that, that may occur and to, um, accommodate costs that are not associated with the, um, the actual bid, uh, costs that fall outside the bid, I would ask you to increase the appropriation, uh, which this loan, loan order does do. We'll also point out that this is, um, paid for, uh, through the DIF program that the council approved last year so that this is not any additional, um, additional cost or expense to the taxpayer.
Thank you. Seeing that there are no, um, questions from the public, either speaking in favor or opposition to this, I will now refer to the, our, my colleagues on the council for any questions they may have about this to the town manager. Anybody have any questions? To the town manager. Mr. Columbodis?
Um, just to, for clarification, Mr. Dutton, can you, um, while no funds will be come from the general budget, uh, future growth in, in property taxes will be encumbered for repayment of this loan, right?
The, uh, correct. Um, the district that the council voted, um, encompasses basically the Main Street, uh, sorry, the Elm Street corridor. Um, so only, um, improvements, uh, made within that district are, um, used, only the taxes upon those improvements are used to, um, fund the bond for the, uh, the Elm Street project. So we've done projections based on the 7.5, uh, million dollar number and, uh, we are confident that we'll be able to pay off if, if the developments that have expressed an interest are, are going through the permitting process or finished the permitting process, um, once they get built, uh, those should cover, well, they definitely will cover the bond, um, issuance and we are hoping to pay that bond off in a much shorter time than what was, um, authorized. We're looking at more seven to 10 years at this point.
And then after that, those funds go to the general fund?
Correct.
Be dispensed?
Correct.
President.
Thank you.
Mr. Souza?
I, I believe the ordinance that we passed, uh, allocated 50% of the taxes generated by new construction on Elm Street. 50% of the taxes?
I, I think it was, we had talked about, um, using percentages and then I think the council felt that it made more sense to just allocate the new, uh, the new growth increases to all, to the, uh, road bond, recognizing that the road had to be done and done correctly. So I think it's 100% of the additional growth. Not the current taxes, but the additional growth.
Right, that's what we're talking about.
Any other questions for the town manager? Mr. Columbodis?
I'm to kind of follow up on that. So, um, if new, if new growth, revenue from new growth exceeds the debt obligation, there could be some funds that spill over into the general fund. Is that how it works?
Exactly.
Or we wouldn't pay off the note earlier?
We have the option, so we would do whatever made the most financial sense, but as a general rule, if, if the, um, taxes that are attributed to the new growth after the date of the DIF, um, exceed the amount needed to pay off the bond, those automatically flow back into the general fund, general revenues.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions for the town manager? Seeing none, I will now, uh, close the public hearing at 7:43 PM. I'll entertain, uh, a motion.
So move.
Second.
To approve, right?
Yes, to approve.
The motion to approve has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, roll call. Sorry about that.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, with the time now being, uh, 7:40 PM, I'll, um, open the public hearing on order FY19060, order of taking property on Elm Street. This measure was not referred to any committee. A public hearing has been duly advertised in the enterprise and on the town's website. And butters have been noted, notified. Therefore, this measure may be considered this evening at the conclusion of the hearing. Uh, so this public hearing is now open. Does the petitioner wish to speak, um, and give us a little bit about this before I open it up to the public for questions?
Mr. President, this, um, order of taking is, uh, as I mentioned, um, at first reading is, is essentially a friendly taking. Um, it encompasses or involves property at the corner of Elm Street and Pleasant Street on, uh, what is now, uh, National Grid property. So it, it is a strip, uh, an L-shaped strip that runs, uh, on the northeast corner of the intersection, uh, in an L shape and, and, uh, it'll be used for, to expand the road layout and create an additional, uh, two turn lanes. One off of Elm Street and one off of Pleasant Street. But, uh, and I should add that we've been working quite closely with National Grid, um, to, um, get through this particular process. And it's their preference. We had offered to, uh, do a permanent easement. They'd prefer to taking. They would rather us take their property than, than grant the easement.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone from the public here that wishes to speak in favor or opposition to this, uh, loan, this, um, order of taking? Anybody here from the public wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this, uh, order of taking? I don't see anyone from the public here that wishes to speak in favor or opposition to this. I'll refer to my colleagues on the council for any questions. To the town manager. Any questions? Mr. Columbodis?
Uh, Mr. Dutton, when you send, they say this is a friendly taking, that, that means it's not, we're not taking it by some process of eminent domain?
It actually is a process of eminent domain, but it's a process that can be either a friendly or, or an unfriendly, uh, eminent domain. In this case, we're, we're working with the property owner, um, to accomplish an eminent domain taking. But when you do the eminent domain taking, the town then owns the property. It's not, it, there's not a split ownership. There's not an easement. There's not something other than just a, a simple fee.
Right.
A fee simple, uh, ownership. So that's what, what, uh, National Grid wanted and we're happy to oblige.
So it's a presumably much more simple process than a hostile?
Hostile, a hostile eminent domain is probably a little more complex because it'll, it inevitably involves litigation. This won't involve litigation.
It comes down to price, really.
I mean, hot, in a hostile eminent domain taking, it's more, it becomes an issue of damages which go to trial and so in, in this context, it's agreed upon.
No muss, no fuss.
Yeah, okay.
That's the legal term.
Yes.
Any other questions for the town manager regarding this taking? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Second. There's a motion and there's a second. Is there any discussion?
Want to close the hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, well now, yes, right, the hearing now closed. What time we have? 7:47, we close the public hearing. There's a motion and there's a second to approve it. It does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Moving on, licensed transactions. There are none for this evening. Moving on to age presentations, we have a presentation on branding and wayfinding, wayfinding from Julia Gazara. I will now refer to the town manager for this presentation.
Mr. President, I'll ask, um, Jennifer Burke, our Community and Economic Development Director, to, uh, introduce Julia and, um, and give you the presentation.
Good evening. Thank you again. I'm Jennifer Burke. I'm the Director of Community and Economic Development. First, I just wanted to give you a little bit of history of how we got where we are today. Um, for about the last year, we've been undergoing a process of branding and wayfinding for the town of Bridgewater. Started about a year ago or a little more than a year ago when I first came to Bridgewater and was told that the town was ordered a grant by the state, um, of $15,000 assistance to help with branding and wayfinding. And that, um, allowed me to choose, consult us to, with us to do some branding, wayfinding, just an informed committee and he worked over the course of the months, um, different things, came up with some interesting ways to start branding and wayfinding the, the town of Bridgewater. Um, at the end of that process, um, some members of the county were not happy how it looked. So, um, we took it upon to reach out to some people in town and, um, were important enough to get hold of Julia Gazara, who is a recent graduate of Bridgewater State University and a graduate of Bridgewater High School and, um, a wonderful, um, design professional who would, worked with us on coming up with a brand that we think talks, speaks to what we think Bridgewater has been, should be, and will continue to be in the future. So, um, I just wanted to show you for perspective what the final design from the consultant was. This interesting blurry picture that if you don't really know what it is, it's kind of the common, um, from a faraway perspective. It's a very pretty picture, but it could really be anywhere. It doesn't really say Bridgewater, at least to most of us, so. So that's just some perspective and I'll let, um, Julia give you more of her background and without further ado, Julia Gazara.
Thank you all for having me here today. I'm very excited to show you my design and what we came up with after a few revisions and the ideas that we went through. Is this gonna, we turn our presentation on? My name is Julie Gazara, as she said. I am a graduate of Bridgewater State University as well as BR. I live in Rainham, so I'm super close and I've always kind of spent most of my time here in Bridgewater. So I believe that I have a unique perspective on what Bridgewater is and where it could be in the future, where BR. Just a second. Um, I met with Elijah Kimberly and Jen, um, who had a wonderful, passionate vision to revitalize Bridgewater, to preserve its integrity while enhancing all of its best qualities. So I tried to take their ideas that they had originally and, and take that a little more forward. Um, I know those, those pictures were a little literal, so my design goes a little more abstract. Don't think too hard. Um, not too crazy, nothing crazy, um, but a little more modern, easily readable. Um, I'm not sure. It's not opening. Or it's just taken a few extra minutes. That's weird. I don't know.
Well, while you're, uh, working on that, we're just gonna take a two-minute recess. You can keep doing what you gotta do. We'll come right back and while we're in, in recess, we'll have a photo taken, okay? We're in recess. Tim, where you going?
That's okay. We, that's been going. Just a little delay. That's okay. Um, yes, so I'm very excited to be here today to show you my design. Um, first, let me show you your original town seal. So this was where I was, where I took my starting point. So I looked at your original town seal and I said, "All right, what can I take from this? What is the most important features? What's gonna best represent Bridgewater?" Some of the symbols that you have on here are the brick castle, which, when I did my research, was, uh, actually a connection to Bridgewater, England, which I thought was really interesting. You also have an oil lamp, an iron forge, because of the forge that was connected to both of us. The Indian, um, banners you have there that say Great Lake, large lake, um, which refers to Lake Nippenikit. So when I think of Bridgewater, I think of the university, Lake Nickmanikit, and I also think of the brick factory. One of my original designs focused a lot on bricks and I went literal with the bricks to best represent that. But I eventually, we eventually kind of ruled that one out as too traditional. Um, so for these symbols that I took in the seal, I thought they would best represent a more modern design. So I took, uh, the shield that's actually in the back, which best represents the strength and integrity of what a town is and what it stands for and that it can stand alone and be strong and hold true. So on the town seal, um, I took, I'll just, oh, did I do that right? There we go. So this was the design that we had come up with, that I finalized and we went back and forth on a few things. Um, for me to best explain this, I took plenty of time to create a color palette. I had many different color combinations, but I settled on a more traditional, a more colonial feel because not only do these colors, um, represent a little bit of patriotism, but they also represent things that we already have established in the town. The university, um, BR, obviously. And they're also very similar colors that you have in your town seal. So when I did the two of these, I wanted this logo to correspond in a cohesive way to your original town seal so that they work hand in hand to best represent Bridgewater. Um, we have your shield in the background and, uh, a little bit of modern text mixed with vintage text. Little bit of both, little modern, little vintage flair. Um, I did this technique of connecting the letters to represent what a bridge is instead of just a bridge. I didn't just want to put a picture of a bridge because we actually don't have like a specific bridge here that I can think of that was specifically important to the town. So for me, the bridge represents a more like overall meaning of connecting people to people, ideas to ideas and in that sense, these letters have to connect and feel like they're connecting us to, you know, people around us, people within our community to best represent, yeah, a strong knit community. And then the water itself falls and like cascades downward to also represent the water that flows under these bridges and how the water also connects us and carries these ideas between places the same way that water does. So, uh, let's see. I believe this idea to be the best balance of contemporary meeting traditional, uh, the classical symbols that you already have combined with, uh, modern design techniques that I found to be best representing of Bridgewater as a member of the community. Um, I hope that this new seal works hand in hand to best represent the town of Bridgewater, hopefully moving forward. Any questions that you may have about this guy?
Was, um, it seems like this seal, this design would be presumably, where would it be used? Would it be used on street signs?
Oh.
And stationary?
Yes.
And this?
While talking, I forgot about the presentation aspect. Um, this is what it would look like in black and white. Um, if you, you, you're printing a lot of stuff and you just want to get things out there. Black and white is always economical. I have two versions of what a business card could be, or there can be third and fourth, however, you may, if you like, these or not. Um, this would be like a, a left-sided logo with information on the right-hand side with your memos that go out. Um, and then also one where the design's in the middle. So I, I wanted to make sure that these would be easily readable as small representations and large scale. So on a large scale, we would see them on signs throughout the town. Um, these are similar to the ones that are on campus. Um, if that's the more modern direction, if you wanted to make those match, they look kind of like this one. Although I know the one that's in the town center is like white and the BSE ones are black. But again, these would be, you know, large-scale signs that you'd be able to see all the details.
Any other questions?
I, I just want to say that, um, at first I found the, the lettering to be almost, you know, it's unexpected certainly to see this sort of non-conforming, you know, um, positioning of the letters. But then I, I kind of, seems like it kind of implies kind of movement and dynamism. And then that's kind of juxtaposed by the, the established 1656, which, you know, that font looks kind of old-timey and kind of anchors that part of our identity and that, our, our legacy, you know, our, our, uh, heritage. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's hard. I mean, I guess this is something we're gonna probably commit to for a while, right? So it's kind of, you know, a scary thing to kind of embark upon, but, you know, I think it, um, well, at first it's unexpected. It, I think it, with time, it, it kind of, it's just grown on me in the last, you know, little bit that I've seen.
It's definitely modern.
So what are the next steps? Maybe this is a question for Ms. Burke. What, um, how would this be implemented? What, you know, what is, where do we, where from here? Say we, we like this and we say, we embrace this. What's the next step?
So, yeah, so we hope and we would like the council's support and, um, hope that you would embrace this design. Um, then we would look to, I think, um, our goal has always been since the onset of this project, um, the first sign that we would look to establish, I think, um, Mr. Dutton has always indicated, um, the Academy Building doesn't have a sign, doesn't, um, identify itself in any way. And I think that would be one of the first signs that we would, um, try I kind of like the arm with the hammer hearkening back to the, the early foundry.
I don't have it in front of me, but there is a whole description of the seal and what every element means. I can certainly get that for you.
Tim?
Uh, this is more for the town manager. The name of this building is the academy building, correct? It's not the municipal office building?
The name of this building is the academy building.
Thank you.
But it would, it, it does serve as our municipal offices, so it, it, you know, if we, if we say, well, it's not on the screen, but if, if we say, you know, when I tell people my office is in the academy building, we need to be able to say, you know, show people where the academy building is. Um, you know, it serves as our town hall, but obviously town hall has a different meaning in Bridgewater than this building. So we want to be clear when we do a sign, we want to be clear about what our buildings are and what, hopefully what function they have.
Any other questions? Bill? No?
No, but I was thinking that, you know, it's a simple solution just to say town offices rather than town hall, you know, or municipal building or something like that.
Yeah.
I know, I know, I know. And we get kind of taken away.
Yeah, but I totally understand the, keeping the identity of the town seal. It could say something instead of where it says Bridgewater, it could say, you know, either academy building and then have the seal and the Massachusetts seal, like on both sides of where it says, you know, town hall. You can incorporate it into the design of the signs, however you like.
Very good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Remember, Julia, that an elephant is a mouse built to government specifications.
How big is that sign? The top portion?
We haven't designed any such, so we don't, that was just an example. There's no science design.
Three feet, two and a half, three.
Frank, can you talk into your microphone?
Well, we were trying to, he was trying to see. Um, the way I'm asking is the size of that, um, sign is going to dictate whether or not you could add little pieces here and there to it because you don't want to crowd it so much that people driving by are going to say, hmm.
Yeah, what is that? Yeah, like all too small to see it. Yeah, absolutely.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for having me.
Okay?
Thank you. Nice to meet you all.
Thank you. We will now move on to the town manager's report and refer to Mr. Dutton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I have a few items this evening. Um, first one on the agenda is the McCowen School update, um, so I'll give you a brief update on that. The ZBA, um, as you know, approved the project and they issued their decision. The decision, uh, the appeal period for that decision expired on May 29th, so that decision has been recorded. Um, as it relates to the financing of the project, as I, as you recall, the project is somewhere in the $21, $22 million range. Um, that, uh, the developers are submitting their final application for a whole potful of different funding sources, but their final, uh, funding is, um, destined to come from DHCD. There's a mini, what's referred to as a mini round, uh, this fall, and, um, and they have submitted their pre-application, or actually, they will be submitting their pre-application beginning of September, and, uh, and I'll certainly be working with them and DHCD to try to accelerate, uh, that funding decision. So, um, otherwise, um, the project, I'm told, uh, scores very well on DHCD's scale. It's already received and secured its federal and state historic tax credit approvals, which is a big hurdle. Um, and once DHCD does approve that funding, and if all goes well, we'll be looking at a, um, probably an end-of-the-year decision there. Um, it'll be about three to five months of design development after that, and then about 16 to 18 months of construction. So, so that gives you, um, some very loose timeline and gives you a little bit of the status of that, of that project. So it's, um, it's frustrating, um, because the building obviously still sits there, people drive by it every day, um, but in the background, uh, there's quite a lot going on and quite a lot of work being done to secure the, the appropriate financing. So, so all very, overall, very optimistic that that will get done and we'll have good news, uh, by the end of the calendar year.
Sure. So we'll take one subject at a time, so I don't know who requested this on the, on the agenda. I'll refer to Counselor George for, and anyone for questions regarding this.
Yep, Mr. President, through you to the town manager. So at this point, who owns the property?
Uh, town owns the property. Town will own the property until the closing. The closing, um, having done a number of these, the closing is, uh, is a monumental event. Um, so, so any private lending, any state tax credit, um, allocations, any state, federal or state historic tax credits, any tax credit, um, financing, uh, private lending, DHCD, several different buckets from DHCD, uh, all of that closes, um, all at the same time. And so if, um, if they, presuming they're successful with, with their pre-application and their application, um, begin, my guess would be a closing beginning of 2020, early in the first quarter of 2020. And again, that's my, my guess, having seen a number of these projects.
Mr. Columboris?
Um, so the, the purchase and sale is contingent on them getting funding?
Correct.
Right? So if one piece, essential piece falls apart, then the whole deal could fall apart and we're back to square one?
Uh, conceptually, I don't think that's going to happen, but conceptually, that, that's a possibility. Um, I think the biggest hurdle for them were the tax credits. Um, I think the other applications, um, having, well, they've done it many times, um, but usually projects require, uh, an application the first year and then a reapplication the second year. Um, they have been working very closely with DHCD and they're, they're under the impression that, um, they'll be able to do their financing in what's referred to as a mini round. Um, DHCD is well aware of the project, has, is very, has been very supportive of the project, uh, through the, the site eligibility process and so forth. Um, so, so DHCD has essentially bought in, um, to the project, and now it's just a matter of, um, doing the applications that are necessary and securing, you know, their funding that's, that's necessary. But as I say, the federal and state historic tax credits are a huge, um, a huge piece of the project and they've now secured those, so that's, that's good news.
So presumably, once momentum, once there's early buy-in, it kind of built its own momentum and it's secured relatively, you know, there's, right?
Yeah. So, and DHCD has bought in, so now it's just sort of procedural. Thanks.
Did you have another question? Anyone else on this? Okay.
I'm sorry, one, one last thing. Um, to your point, Mr. Dutton, that it, to all appearances, it looks like nothing's happening. I wonder if some little sign indicating that something is happening might make sense. I don't know what that would cost or, I think this, those little messages that we're removing might be useful.
I believe the sign has a sign that says under agreement.
Right, maybe something.
I'll see if we can, see what you can do. Do something a little more explanatory so that people that drive by have a little bit of sense.
Cut the grass, that'd be one of them.
Grass is cut, was cut.
That's a great sign. That's a, usually tells people a lot of things.
Or even a sign. I don't know that it's premature to put up a sign with sort of the artist's rendering of what it would look like, so, but I'll, I'll ask about it.
Excise tax demand update.
Excise tax. So I think as the council knows, and, and we've explained a little bit, um, we send out roughly 22,000 bills annually for excise tax, and, um, and of those 22,000 bills, there were approximately 650 of them, um, that were not, uh, received by the, the vehicle owner. So, um, they ended up receiving a demand, uh, having not received the first bill. So, um, so I did ask Collector Treasurer's Office, uh, they are all obviously very well aware of the issue and what happened. Um, well, let me back up. So when the demand notice gets sent out, obviously there's the tax, the excise tax that's due, plus, uh, an additional charge. You know, it's a, it's a, for lack of a better word, a fine. So, uh, obviously we will waive, um, those fines. We have been doing that, um, and we will continue to do that to the extent that any of them have, uh, are still outstanding. I don't think there are a whole lot that are still outstanding. Um, so that is the practice down in the, in the office is just to waive the fee. If somebody comes in to pay the bill, we obviously waive the fee. Um, we've also issued refunds for overpayments, and I, I don't know if it was my question or one of the council's questions, um, was do you have to file for some kind of abatement in order to, to waive the fee? And no, you don't need to file an abatement. If you come in and talk to the staff, uh, down in the office, they're all well aware of the issues. They're, they know, they know exactly, um, you know, who, who paid, uh, the, the bill plus the demand, um, and they've already started processing refunds, uh, for those folks. So, um, as I mentioned, you don't need to file for an abatement. They have, uh, they've addressed, um, over 150 bills, uh, as of last week. They, they had five refunds being processed and, uh, and they had waived, um, the excess balances on the, on about 40 of the additional bills. So, so they have largely caught up and, uh, but having said that, if anybody out there received a demand without receiving the original bill, um, call the office. They, they, they know how to deal with, with those issues and they'll be happy to assist. Uh, I do want to point out one thing. Um, our, uh, the vendor that, that we use to, to do the online billing has corrected all of the stuff on their end, uh, but I do want to point out, um, if, if you happen to get a new license plate, uh, you need to go back into the system, uh, and update your account because that's how it's going to track now by license plate, um, and, which is much easier, um, and won't, won't cause the same problem again. But it is important, if you get a new license plate, even though you got the same car, if you get a new license plate, go in and, and update your info, or just call the, the Collector Treasurer's Office and they'll help you out. Um, so that, they did say it's been about a month since they've had any questions about, about the excise issue, um, but obviously they're still happy to help for anybody that thinks that they may have, uh, paid, actually paid the demand. Um, they can go into the system and, and figure out if, if, uh, if you actually did owe the demand or if you did not receive the bill, um, and, uh, and they're, you know, you've got a refund for, for the demand piece of the bill. So, so that's, um, that is the update on that.
Any questions?
To answer questions?
Counselor George?
Thank you. Through you to the town manager. Do we know why the 650 bills weren't received?
Um, so let me see if I can explain. The, uh, it's, it's specific to people that signed up for online billing, um, and of those people that signed up for online billing, um, something had, something triggered them not, you know, there was, I believe it was a time issue between when commitments were made and, and the bills went out. Um, I think if you had signed up for online billing in that, in that interim, then you did not get the bill, uh, did not get a paper bill, but you didn't get the electronic bill either. Um, and then obviously, when the demands went out, everybody got the demand. So I, I believe it was, it was that timing issue. Um, the vendor obviously has fixed that, um, but it, I believe, I, the specifics of why that gap caused that, I, I don't know, but I can certainly find out.
So did they receive the demands in the mail or did they receive it via?
Demands are always sent via mail, so yes.
Okay, because, um, I mean, just from a layman's perspective, from what I've seen, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me why those 650 didn't get their original bill but did get the demand. And I can honestly understand people's frustration around that, um, and I appreciate, you know, what, what the Collector's Office is doing, but what assurances do we have that this isn't going to happen again?
Well, that's a good question. We've dealt with the vendor, um, had a number of meetings with them. They've shown us their fix. Um, and he, you know, the vendor is, is not exclusive to us. There are many town, other towns in Massachusetts that use the same vendor, um, and in this iteration had similar issues, um, or during this cycle had similar issues with, with demands and bills. So, um, but we've been assured, we've looked at it, you know, we've had a team set up to address the issue that, that came up, um, with, with this vendor. Um, and so we're, at least internally, we're fairly sure, we're very sure it's not going to happen again.
But do we, now, it seems like a vendor issue. Are you 100% sure the vendor's not going to repeat this issue?
Uh, yes, because they changed their, their format. Instead of tracking the automobile, um, the way they were tracking it prior, they're tracking the autom, automobile by, by plate number. So, so that it's, I, there was an issue of the automobile, automobile connected to the, the property, and again, I shouldn't be, I'm not extremely clear on this, I shouldn't even be offering.
I don't mean to cut you off. I, I, I understand somewhat. I guess my concern right now is a year from now, we're sitting here talking about a similar situation again. Is this a new vendor or have we had this vendor for a while?
This vendor's new to us. We had, this is the vendor that we, um, went with to do, to do the online billing, so it's relatively new.
So if they were my, if I were their customer, I would be very unhappy, and I'd also want some ultimate reassurances that this isn't going to happen again. Because I think we've all seen some of it, you know, I can take with a grain of salt, but there are a lot of people out there that are completely frustrated at the fact that they never got a bill and they got a demand notice. They also paid the demand notice to find out that there was a glitch in the system that they didn't get the original notice. So I'm, I'm putting on you to go to the vendor and say, if, if this happens again, we need to find a new vendor.
We've expressed exactly those sentiments.
And as someone who was a person who did not get, um, their online bill and only got the demand, the town was very accommodating, very quick and swift to help me, and 650 people is a little under, I think, 3% of the total, so let's not throw
in Massachusetts that use the same vendor and in this iteration had similar issues or during this cycle had similar issues with, with demands and bills. So, but we've been assured, we've looked at it, you know, we've had a team set up to address the issue that, that came up with, with this vendor and so we're, at least internally, we're fairly sure, we're very sure it's not going to happen again.
But do we, now, it seems like a vendor issue, are you 100% sure the vendor's not going to repeat this issue?
Yes, because they changed their, their format, instead of tracking the automobile the way they were tracking it prior, they're tracking the automobile by, by plate number. So, so that it's, there was an issue of the automobile connected to the, the property and again, I shouldn't be, I'm not extremely clear on this, I shouldn't even be offering but
I don't mean to cut you off, I, I understand somewhat. I guess my concern right now is a year from now, we're sitting here talking about a similar situation again. Is this a new vendor or have we had this vendor for a while?
This vendor's new to us, we had, this is the vendor that we went with to do, to do the online billing, so it's relatively new.
So if, if they were my, if I were their customer, I would be very unhappy and I'd also want some ultimate reassurances that this isn't going to happen again. Because I think we've all seen, some of it, you know, I can take with a grain of salt, but there are a lot of people out there that are completely frustrated at the fact that they never got a bill and they got a demand notice, they also paid the demand notice to find out that there was a glitch in the system that they didn't get the original notice. So I'm, I'm putting on you to go to the vendor and say, if, if this happens again, we need to find a new vendor.
We've expressed exactly those sentiments.
And as someone who was a person who did not get their online bill and only got the demand, the town was very accommodating, very quick and swift to help me and 650 people is a little under, I think, 3% of the total, so let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater. I think there was an issue with the initial implementation, with most implementations with technology do have a little bumps in the road, so I thank you for your following up with them and having an understanding and then if there's any other bills that will be going out consequently from them or from the system, let's keep an eye on it ahead of the big excise tax push.
Very, very fair point, my, I'll, I think we're going to try to drive people to do the online billing, probably helps with collections overhead, 3% to me is probably 2% too much. I, I don't know what the averages are, but I don't think I've ever heard of this in prior billings. We've had instances where people haven't gotten it, but to the extent of 650, I think that's a lot, that's my opinion, so.
So is the, this must have happened to other clients that they had been, have you talked to your counterparts in other towns, have they had a similar situation? If this, if, if the way this happened, happened the way you explained it, this should have happened to all their clients, not just Bridgewater. And the demand, does the demand piece go to them or does it come to the town? Is there the, the extra fee?
No, it comes to the town.
That's town money, it's not their money. If, if somebody does pay it, it doesn't go to the vendor, it comes to the town and somebody, and the town would re, would just send that back to the person, that's good, okay.
Correct.
Any other questions regarding this? Moving on to update on consultants?
Okay, so it was actually a very timely question about the consultants and I, I know that there's probably a sense that, you know, the town hires all these consultants and the consultants come up with, or the perception is consultants come up with, with a report and the report sits on a shelf and then, you know, a couple of years later, we go hire another consultant to do the same thing. So I just thought I'd give you sort of a spreadsheet that shows what, all the different projects we've, we've got going on and give you a little bit of the status where they are. These are all projects that either involve some sort of consultant, whether it's an engineer, an architect, you know, a, a straight consultant, planning consultant, for instance. And then I gave you, I, I did not include projects where I don't anticipate that we would be hiring a consultant, gave you the value of the, the consulting contract, how it's funded and then I just, for the, for the sake of, of some transparency, wanted to show you who the team leader was and the status of, of the actual project. So obviously, two big ones right now that, that people are aware of, Elm Street and First Street, Elm Street, VHB is our engineering firm and out of this $7 million project, their fee is about $377,000, funded partially from the state of Massachusetts and, and also through the DIF that the council voted. Obviously, that project is underway, we opened up bids and we're about to make an award. First Street, SEA, Larry Silva is the consultant on that project, he's been paid out of the returned road bond, we, Planning Board authorized the road bond to be released back to the property owners on First Street. Again, First Street's a private road, so our involvement is really sort of on a, on a procurement side and a, and a pass-through. You know, we're, we're going to cover the bond and then, and then assess a betterment to the property owners on, on First Street. So that one is also underway, they're about to start the drainage portion of that project. We've talked about Economic Development Data Project, conceptually and possibly, we'll use Buxton, which is a company that has developed pretty robust economic development and business development plan that, that would cost us in the neighborhood of $65,000 and would come out of the one-time and unforeseen fund. Well, I don't want to bore you all to death, but I could go right down the list. So full circle, we're doing a permitting and licensing program implementation, it's a, it's a more robust version of the building system, the, the technology the building office has currently to do license, or to do building permitting and we're rolling that out to all different phases of permitting and licensing. Again, that project is underway. You heard from Julia today, so I don't need to rehash that one. Utility billing implementation, that's going on right now and again, that came out of Water and Sewer. Utility billing information will streamline and improve the accuracy of our billing substantially and allow us to get by with fewer employees. We're looking at a purchase order implementation, purchase order system implementation, again, that's not been funded yet and we're awaiting some recommendations about how to proceed on that one, same with, nope, sorry, the water main, yeah, same with the water main replacement program. StanTech, the Water and Sewer Department's engineering firm is currently putting together a proposal for a water main replacement program that is more pro, well, is just proactive period. Right now, Water and Sewer, for a number of reasons, has had to be very reactive to water main breaks and so forth and, and so we're trying to get ahead of the curve and be a little more proactive there. We'll be looking at an HR and payroll component of the, of our financial system that, that was approved by capital appropriation, that rollout will begin in FY 2020. Open Gov implementation, Open Gov is something that I've talked to the council about for probably about four years and we're finally at the point of being able to, to implement that. That'll show, give all our financials to anybody that wants to look at them, it'll be, it'll be posted as part of our website and you'll be able to maneuver and manipulate all of those, those numbers to be able to really get a clear picture of how the town gets its money and how the town spends its money, other than just the simple budget process, which is what most people know now. Zoning recodification, I think council's well aware of that. We've got a $40,000 appropriation, we also have some money coming from the state of Massachusetts in, in the form of grant funding. Master Plan update, again
Are you looking at that?
An appropriation for Barrett Consulting Group, that'll carry us through December and completed master plan that the Planning Board will adopt and the, and obviously the council will be made well aware of. We also, to complete the, the, what we used to call the comprehensive plan, in order to create a true master plan, council approved additional funding to, to complete that project and finalize it. GIS implementation, GIS is a tool that is pretty darn common now around the country. It was, in its very infancy, we had it in Bridgewater, obviously, it was dropped when, when times were tough. We've used a little bit of money, council's voted a little bit of money in order to get that back underway and get that active. Electric vehicles, we provide, we hired a consultant just to walk us through the application process there, not very much money there. Municipal vulnerability planning, the MVP process, we asked Green International Affiliates to come in, they were an approved vendor by the, excuse me, the Commonwealth and the Commonwealth funded their, their bill completely and that was completed just this week. Mitchell School Building, Daedalus Projects and RDA, Daedalus is the owner, owner's project manager and RDA is the architect on that program and as you recall, the town appropriated $800,000 and, and voted debt exclusion for that money. That is also assuming that the state will offset that amount by, by some percentage, but we'll know exactly what percentage once we either approve a building project or we The Spring Street Old Highway Garage, we've got several firms, engineering firms, environmental service firms lined up to take a look at that and, and that appropriation will be coming to you in the future, as will Senior Center Renovations, will hire a professional architect to, to design upgrades there. I'm not anticipating any major upgrades, mostly it's, mostly it's, I want to say cosmetic, but that's probably a little more than that. Pickleball, council voted $25,000 out of capital appropriation and as soon, we're getting very close actually to being able to, to pull the trigger on, on installing the courts. We just have to make sure that we cite them properly to accommodate the, the future Mitchell Housing Choice Grants, we have not yet applied for any of the housing choice grants, we do qualify as a housing choice community and we may or may not be looking at, at some professional help to help us with funding there, but, but I thought I'd put that on there just as a possibility of looking for, for additional help. Community Preservation Committee hires a consultant on a yearly basis to help it with it, help it with its mission and, and that 23,000 comes out of the community, directly out of the community preservation funds. Cross, Cross Street, roads, sidewalks and drainage, which this may appear twice on the list, that, that is also in the early stages of planning and that'll be in a, a future appropriation and very likely a future debt exclusion vote, if not funded by some complete streets grant funding is what our hope is there. But Memorial Building, Tape Architects has, has done some initial work there and, and we have already have money sitting in an account waiting for that project to begin and we will use a piece of that appropriation to pay for the architect's services there. Opportunity Zone Downtown, so far we've, any work we've done on the Opportunity Zone has been in-house, most of it education. Moving forward, we may come to the council looking for a little bit of money just to put together a solid and, and useful marketing plan for that, that private opportunity. Fire Station, which is rapidly accelerating in importance to, to us, is, is also a future appropriation, it's in the, in the early planning phases, putting together the committee and identifying, putting together an RFQ for, for feasibility work. Town Hall feasibility study, no secret to the council, the Commonwealth through the Massachusetts Cultural Council has funded $30,000 and you'll see, I think later on your agendas, is our $30,000 match, so that project is, is about to get underway in earnest. LED streetlight conversion is, is well underway, we hired Tanco Lighting and we've also gotten funding from the Commonwealth and from MAPC to offset that, but we've appropriated 39,000 out of the one-time and unforeseen fund. Same with the building office software implementation, $8,500, that should be rolling out shortly over the summer and that's the face, the usable, the usable face to, to the building office webpage, so you can go on and, if you want to build a garage, you plug in where your piece of property is and, and if it's so many feet within a wetland, so asks a bunch of questions and then tells you exactly where you need to go in order to get a permit to do what you'd like to do. MS4 implementation and drafting, excuse me, of an ordinance, we've hired Beta Inc., environmental consultants, environmental engineers based in Massachusetts and we voted 77,000, almost $80,000, I'm sorry, we've so far been funding that through our non, excuse me, non-refundable fees account, but that will come to the council at some point for further appropriation. If, if you recall, I've been sending up a little bit of a early warning on that, that that's probably going to be a, an annual cost of in the 175 to 250 range as, as the, as those MS4 regulations really kick in over the next several fiscal years. Street Scan Education Integration, we got the, all the reports and all of the, the street and sidewalk conditions now available to us, that was a capital appropriation for $85,000 and we are in the education phase as we educate employees on how to use that and, and get the most out of it. High Street Bridge and Dam Removal, the Commonwealth has, has given us some funding, has given us quite a bit of funding along with NOAA and several other organizations. We've hired Malone and McBroom who are, who are engineers that specialize in dam removal. We will be looking for a $45,000 appropriation for our piece of that. The total cost of the, of the 25% design phase is somewhere in the neighborhood of 250 to 275. We'll be coming back to the council looking for 45,000 to offset what would be our contribution to that. So again, this is, is actually a good example, so we're spending $45,000 to prepare ourselves for grant funding, which will, in that case, be in the multi-millions of dollars from probably an assortment of sources, whether it be NOAA, whether it be the Commonwealth and even private, private firms, so or private organizations. So document management digitizing, consulting piece of that is not very much, a couple of thousand dollars. That will get us to the point where we can digitize all our documents and we've got millions of documents that actually have to go through that process, but that process is, is also underway. In terms of multimillion expenditures, the wastewater treatment plant, we know that we have approximately 30 to 35 million dollar upgrade to do on the wastewater treatment plant, that comes from the EPA and, and the DEP and their, their issuance of a discharge permit with, with much tighter thresholds for, for a number of different items, but not unexpected, we did a lot of work to, to try to delay and we did succeed to some extent, but that initial engineering right now is $250,000, that will climb substantially. On the water side, the water treatment plant, again, another multimillion dollar project is, is currently almost 800,000 in, in engineering expense for that. Classification Compensation Study, we have not determined who that consultant will be, but we, council has, has approved that and we're in the process of preparing an Four different traffic items, one, the signal upgrade to the Route 18 Broad Street lights and tying those in with the MBTA, that those lights, as, as Mike Levy will tell you, are the originals and all of the mechanicals are the originals and they have over, well past their life expectancy. Bedford and Grove Street Intersection Improvements, again, that we're looking to see what we can do at that intersection, which has had a number of accidents and at least one death in the past five years. The, we've also, we're also looking at 166 Mount Prospect and 200 South Street, the old high school and the Williams School for improved traffic, trying to make, make sense of, of those, what those, how those schools will be used certainly, but trying to, trying to create a better traffic pattern that makes them both safer places to go to school. And then finally, on the traffic, the big one is for And then finally, on the traffic, the big one is for us is the downtown traffic circulation improvements, really driven by pedestrian bike safety and, and so that, that's about 53, 54,000, again, out of the one-time and unforeseen fund. Vernon and South, I mentioned Cross Street before, but Vernon and South also in the early planning phases, very, very likely that we'll need engineering help there. Golf course is looking to do golf cart path reconstruction. It's probable that we will not need to hire any kind of consultant there, but it is possible, so it's on the list. We'd like to implement a farmer's market and again, unlikely that we'd have to hire a consultant to do that, but, but that is on the list and in case we do, I just want to be as transparent as possible. We continue to look for complete street grants and we have hired Green International to at least guide us. We haven't, well, I shouldn't say we've hired them, we've asked them for a proposal and we'll see, see what comes of that. So same with park and land grant funding, we'll be looking, as I've mentioned before, we'll be looking at park grant funding for, or sorry, land grant funding for a property purchase, for property adjacent to Styles and Hart Park and then we'll be looking for park grant funding probably a year from now to make improvements to that park, so. World War I memorial, although they were priceless, they didn't charge us a thing. There was a bit of a competition or capstone project for the students at the Boston Architectural College to come up with proposals for the World War I memorial. As we move forward, we will possibly need to get a landscape architect to actually design the very specific changes and give us construction drawings for that, that project, so that's in the works. Possibility of moving the MBTA stop, so far OCPC has served as, as our consultant and if we move forward with that, there's the possibility of having to do an appropriation for more professional help there. We also are looking to adopt a shade tree management plan and again, if we can't get help with that gratis, we may have to go out and expend a little bit of money. Strategic planning process, Paradigm Associates, Bernie Lynch has, has done a fair amount of work there and that's underway and we have put that on hold pending the results of master planning process, but as soon as that's completed, he will be back to finalize, finalize some of those strategic planning objectives that he had, he had laid out. Carver's Engineering, we have, as you recall, Department of Dam Safety had issued us non-compliance or rated the dam as poor, the condition of the dam is poor and we hired Amory Engineers to, to deal with the Office of Dam Safety and also provide proposals for a long-term fix and that is continuing. And finally, the building maintenance plan, the council has voted out of capital appropriation, some money to come up with just the plan for long-term building maintenance that, that we can adopt and that is in the process, we're in the process of preparing the RFQ for that. So that's a few items. Keeps us busy, but I do, you know, if you, if you look down the column of who's leading the charge on those, the names are fairly repetitive and, and so my job is to make sure that we identify the most pressing issues and prioritize our time and our efforts on the things that are going to provide the best results. So that's, that's kind of what, what we're in the process of doing now. I will point out that we hire, and for those people who, who get all concerned that we're hiring consultants, we are hiring consultants in some cases to fill in what another town may hire a, an employee to do. So we have a thin staff, very thin staff, we know that, that's not a complaint. Quite honestly, I'd rather have a thin staff that's working on all cylinders and then reaching out for extra help when it's necessary than to be overstaffed and not, not having enough for people to do. So I think, I think overall, your question was about consultants and, and what projects we're doing and where they stand and so I wanted to give you this picture, but then also kind of give you sort of the philosophy of how we, how we use those consultants and what role the consultants play in, in moving us forward. I will say that a lot of what we do with consultants, and I didn't organize the spreadsheet this way, but a lot of what we do on the, especially the planning side, is designed to put us in a position, spending a little bit of money now to put us in a position where, where we essentially check off all the boxes on grant applications, mostly through, through the state, whether that's Department of Transportation, DHCD or, or one of the executive offices. That's, that's, that's kind of how we're trying to align our work. So obviously, some of these are in, in much, much more advanced than others, as you saw, there are a lot that are sort of in the on-deck circle, but there are a lot that are also underway, so. That's, happy to answer questions.
Counsel Lo, should you have a question or? You forget it?
Does this live somewhere that's accessible to the council and to residents and should it?
I'm sorry?
Does this live somewhere that we could access this?
This, as the, my team is putting together a document that's going to be usable and available for anybody. We'll put it up on the website so people can see. Something better than a spreadsheet.
I like the spreadsheet myself, but that's just me. Some of the things that I think are lacking from the spreadsheet though, that would be very useful to me are not only who's managing it, but who drove the decision to do that. So for example, with the wastewater treatment and the water treatment plant, that's driven by the federal government, EPA tells us you have to do it, right? And so, and then the next, the next column would be, do we have, do we have in-house expertise to do this or not? No, we can't design wastewater treatment plants. It would make no sense to have somebody on staff of the town to be designing wastewater treatment plants. So there's, there's an expense that you say, yeah, that makes a heck of a lot of sense. You know, the Mitchell School, which we're going to talk about in a second, that decision was driven by the voters, it was put forward by the school committee and, you know, the voters said yes, so that was who drove it and it's, it's required by the state to have an OPM and an architect, there's no way around that. And so it would, it would, I think be useful for us as a council, and certainly anyone can disagree, is one of the things that we're driving or you're driving as a town manager that are not required, but nice to do things. And then you'd said about the MS4 possibly being a recurring expense, well, then it shouldn't come out of one-time unforeseen every time, it needs to get into the budget and just be part of the regular expense. So, you know, that, I understand the first time we do it, okay, now we've got it and we're moving forward, but those are the type of things, rather than just understanding, you know, the name of the person, the name of the project and who's running it and how much money we had, but who, who actually initiated the project at an ultimate level? And is it something that we have expertise in the town in or could theoretically have a committee of townspeople do? Or is it something you really need a professional expert to do? And is it a requirement that we do this? We have to do certain things and, you know, if, we have to hire an OPM, we have to hire an architect for the school. So there's no, just, there's no discussion about that, but the, you know, a farmer's market, well, you know, would that be better served rather than spending 10 or 15,000 dollars for somebody to come in and tell us how to do it? Could we get folks in town to sit down and talk about it or can it be done in-house? And is it a requirement or is it really an optional thing that we can do and figure out how to prioritize? Because, you know, we went through a list of 50-something things and I, you know, I know some of them and whether they're mandatory or optional and who drove them, I couldn't tell you that I know all of them, but that, that would help me in sorting out kind of the wheat from the chaff.
Anyone else? Bill?
Thank you. Much larger list than I was expecting to see. So I look at some of these and it's, you know, consulting versus contractor, is the way I look at it, because there's some that are definitely, we don't have the in-house staff, so we need to pull in someone that has that expertise, not necessarily to do consulting work, but to do the work of building out whatever it is. What we were talking about earlier and have been for a while though, is the relationship between the zoning ordinance changes, the master plans changes, the strategic plan changes, potentially the economic development data project and two or three other things in there. So what, is it Jennifer Burke that is kind of managing all of that or is it the planning board or is it something else? Because it seems like out of the five or six line items that are ongoing right now, it needs to have a focus of, that has a union to it that can bring whatever back to the council it needs. And I'm not sure we've heard from all of the pieces, I don't know what's going on in the master plan work. Strategic plan work sounds like it's on hold, but I don't think we get a presentation up to what it was. So I'd like to see something that kind of makes some cohesion between all those pieces.
That's a good, that's actually a good point. I think, I think our effort here was to just, just sort of list out all of the different projects and based, you know, on the different consultants, so it was separated by sort of consultant. But we do have, you know, and we can show that to you, there is some cohesion built into different, specifically the ones you mentioned, the master plan, zoning, strategic planning, economic development, they're all, you know, a lot of these programs wrap themselves into to sort of overarching goals, they all do, you know, wrap themselves into overarching goals. So, so certainly we'll show you that as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Colm Bodas?
I think it'd be quite useful for the council to have a copy of this and even as an Excel file to be able to implement, because as, like Mr. Fitzgibbons, I, as you were going through it, I was seeing the need for more columns and specificity, like what percentage is being paid for by grant and what, you know, so source, more specific source of funding would be useful. And then as Mr. Fitzgibbons kind of suggested, priority, you know, and this, this sort of document, you kind of-
Find out what the goal is.
Right.
Why are we doing this?
Yeah, I was going to say the purpose, right.
And so something like this, which is really just, starts out as just a list where you just kind of, you know, add to this master, a list can turn out to be a really useful planning document, conceptual document, like what are all the pieces that are happening in many different places? I know that might not have been the initial motivation for asking for it, but it ends up being that.
Counsel George?
If I could follow up on that, so that's a really good question. The reason is that as a legislative body, we're the only ones in town that can take action on the results of a lot of these things, on most of these things, right? So in terms of zoning changes, we're responsible for accepting them, so we set the policy of that. So we're letting someone else set the tone and direction of the, of what needs to be done, but ultimately we're responsible for setting the policy of zoning. The same thing with, with strategic planning, again, it's a policy issue and if there's specific policies that result in zoning or, or other things, we're as a legislative body responsible for acting on those. So it was just to bring more information out on, on those pieces, because there's not any other committees, the other committees can make recommendations, the, the planning board may be able to take action but on a couple of things, but ultimately it comes back to here.
Counsel George?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you to the town manager. So with Counsel Fitzgibbons having a good point, a lot of these are mandated, which I understand. What I'd also like to see if at all possible is the ones that we have that I'll, I'm going to call them elective, what do we expect in either generating revenue or cost savings? Because if you look at these numbers, we really don't have any indication, what's the ROI? And as a taxpayer, I would sit here and say, if we're going to spend, you know, $30,000 on something that, that is our choice, what's the return? And some of it can be, you know, dollar-wise and maybe some of it is efficiencies, but I think we really need, the goal ultimately is there, but also what do we expect in return for the investment?
And on that note, one, I'll just close it out by saying thank you for putting that together. I would also would like to see, I want to take a look at these, you know, just visualize and look at them, because I do think a lot of them are consulting and a lot of it, like Counsel Wood said, are contractors. I like to, I like to decipher that out, try to look at them. But the bottom line is too, is I think the taxpayers want to see results. You know, we can spend $800,000 to study the feasibility of a new elementary school, but if it never passes, where's the result? And if we, you know, we know we're going to see results on Elm Street, we know that's going to happen. That's more of a contractual thing, not a consulting thing. With all these other master plans and traffic studies and things like that, you know, those are things that I think people might be a little more skeptical with, because yes, we're going to get a nice report of what we should do, but what will be implemented, what will the results be? So that's what I want to kind of get out of this list, our results. So I think it's, I was surprised by the number of them, I think we, I think we do have a lot, we had a discussion earlier tonight about another consult, well, it's actually, actually already on the list, but we haven't approved it yet, that will take up next week, next meeting, but I think, I think we have a lot, we have a lot of consultants working for the town. So I just think results, like this building is the result of something. We had a consultant, this is a great result of something and it's, unfortunately, we didn't ask for this back then. Moving on to the North Street business update.
Whoops. All right. Let me shift gears. All right, North Street, there is a piece of property on North Street that is used ostensibly as a slaughterhouse, has been for a number of years and I think Counsel Suss had asked, just to ask me to check on that piece of property, make sure taxes are current and just give a general update on what's going on there. So I can tell you that the taxes are current, there's a personal property account and, and a real estate account and those taxes are current. There is, there is another business operating off of that property that is, owes a fourth quarter of 2019 tax, but that's not terribly substantial. The, there was a letter issued back in 2010 from the building inspector at the time pointing out that there was use on, on that property that was not permitted. The letter wasn't very clear and we don't have the attachments, but it did ask the owner to stop the particular use. Since then, the council has passed a right to farm ordinance, which was back in 2015, 2014, 2015. And so there is some thought that the, that the use of the property, the adverse use of the property may be negated by the right to farm ordinance. The property sits in a residential AB district and, and the use from the, the use of, that the property owner has, has going on there is permitted. And the only other thing I would have to add to that is just a reminder that Bridgewater has a single tax rate, so we don't, we don't charge a different tax on a commercial property that we do on a residential property, it's all based on one single tax rate. So that is, that is where that one stands right now, but happy to answer your question.
Okay. We know the slaughterhouse is good to go, but the-
We know the slaughterhouse is good to go, but the property also extends to the, all the way to the corner, in fact, where that little house is on the corner. The guy who has a tree-cutting business, he's not growing trees there, okay? He's going out, cleaning land, bringing the trees back, he's turning it into firewood and chipping, he's trucking in a lot of fill, he's trucking in loom, he's screening the loom, he's shipping the fill out when he sells it. So he has a business there that has nothing to do with farming. And it's on a piece of property that's designated agriculture. Okay? So it's a business that has nothing to do with agriculture on a piece of property that's agriculture. Is that the proper use of that piece of property? And the slaughterhouse may be paying taxes for all his equipment, but the day I was up there, there's a tractor trailer, there's a big eighteen-wheeler, there's an excavator, there's a front-end loader, there's a big screener for the loom. Is he paying taxes for the equipment there? Now, the vehicles that are registered, I'm sure he's paying taxes. But all the other equipment that I mentioned, it never moves unless it's on a trailer, or it just stays there to be used right there. Are we collecting taxes on that equipment as well? And if he's not a farming business, should he be there to begin with? Sometimes it becomes very, very disruptive to all the neighbors, especially when he's running the screener. And someone told me he had a stone crusher over there a few times, which was making all kinds of racket. If you're familiar with a stone crusher, that's what's left over from the screening, or when they pull in the fill, and they crush it down to a small number-two stone, maybe an inch. And those are very noisy. Plus, all the trucks coming in and all of that stuff. That was my question. That's what I'm really interested in knowing. Because we already determined that the slaughterhouse belongs there, okay? He has every right to be there. But the other guy, in my opinion, and then a lot of the neighbors, say, he doesn't belong there. That's not the proper use for the piece of property that's determined to be agriculture and paying taxes, which we all know, when you have a piece of land that's agriculture, you get a reduced tax rate on the piece of property. That's what we needed, that I was asking to have looked into and see where he is and what's happening.
So they, and... Mr. President?
Go ahead.
I'm really not comfortable discussing a particular individual in terms of the town manager's report. I don't believe it's an appropriate forum for us to do that. So I'm going to get up and excuse myself from the rest of this discussion, and I'll be back for the Mitchell School discussion. Thank you.
So I guess I would, if that's...
I don't, I didn't hear any particular name being brought up, so I don't, I don't really know what this is all about. It's on the agenda under this format that we have for town manager's report, which hopefully we'll discuss another meeting, because I don't particularly like this format. But I didn't hear anybody's name being called, so if the town council doesn't see a problem with continuing, I see no problem with continuing. Answering Counsel Sousa's question.
I mean, frankly, though, it's probably an issue for the building inspector. I'm not sure why it's being directed at the town manager as it is, right? I mean, the town manager does not dictate or address any building code violations. It's not part of the purview of his job, so...
Okay, may I?
Sure. Best of my knowledge, one day I actually went into the building inspector's office to get a permit that I was working on personal, and the guy in there wasn't the building inspector, another guy said, "Don't talk to him. He's on the council. We can't talk to him. We can't talk to anybody on the council. They have to go through Mike." That's what I'm doing.
Yeah, well, be that as it may, I'm not sure what was said to you or not said to you, and certainly, I don't think this is the proper forum to get into that. This is your town council meeting. This has nothing to do with you guys enacting legislation. It does have to do with possible violations of our ordinance, conceivably. So as a counselor and as a citizen, I would certainly go and talk to the building inspector, and if he isn't properly addressing your concerns, then I think that's probably more of a private employment matter that can be discussed between the building inspector and the town manager. But I think we're going off course here. I don't think the town manager has any purview over enforcing building violations.
So what you're telling me here this evening, that if I go down to the building official's office tomorrow morning, I can sit down with him and present this entire thing to him?
I'm not the secretary of the building inspector.
Well, when his schedule allows it, okay? Because I'm being told that I'm not supposed to talk to them, I have to bring the issue to the town manager. That's what I'm trying to question.
I don't think this is the appropriate forum for that discussion.
It was put on the docket from this is the way we approach it.
Sure.
Okay?
And there's been a discussion, so...
So I would add, if I could, that there is, under the right-to-farm ordinance, there is a remedy for people that have a complaint about any specific operation. They can file a written grievance with me, or they can file it with the zoning enforcement officer. But that's, or the Board of Health. But in this case, I don't believe it, it's a health issue, but it's probably a zoning issue. So you can, the neighbors or whoever, whoever's concerned about that operation can certainly file something with me, or with Mr. Solari, as the zoning enforcement officer. And we'll be happy to, happy to take that up.
Counselor Collins-Bodas, did you have...
Yeah, I'm just a little confused. So the building inspector is authorized by, given authority by the state, is that he's not under the direction of the town manager in his capacity as building inspector?
Well, he is an employee of the town manager. So that's why I said if there's an employment issue to discuss, that's a different subject.
What about a performance issue?
Absolutely. That's a different subject as well.
So if a counselor thinks that...
But I, but this, this topic is not building inspector performance, which would be executive session anyway, right? Because we know that that's an exemption under the open meeting law, and we wouldn't want to start veering into throwing out employment discussions.
Casting aspersions.
Right. And we also know that the council, under the charter, has absolutely zero authority to make any recommendations rather, as it relates to the employment of any individual. So I think there are a lot of, we're going way to the right of where the charter tells us we should be going. And I certainly respect Mr. Sousa's opinion about what's happening, and certainly, I think the town manager will look into that. I just don't think this is the forum for it.
Right. So let me just clarify. So if constituents come to a counselor and say, there are potholes all over the roads, it's not our job to say, come to the town manager. Well, we shouldn't go to the highway, head of the highway department and say, fix the potholes, right? We certainly shouldn't do that.
No, you wouldn't do that.
We shouldn't go to the town manager and say, this guy's not doing his job. But I think it's within our, I think it's our job and our obligation to say, the potholes aren't being filled. Get it done. You know, and we don't need to be obnoxious about it. But that, that's, you know, I've talked about this kind of chain of accountability, you know.
Well, you fund, right? You, that's, you would do it in your funding.
But you can also, we can also pass the resolution saying, do your damn job, right?
Absolutely.
Make sure the job gets done.
Well, maybe. Maybe you could, maybe you couldn't. I think, again, you're veering, it's a very, it's a very fine line with this notion of the town manager controlling and containing the employees of the town versus what you all have authority to do. So I think you're walking, it's very close. You know, I, I would have to analyze it further. Quite frankly, I hadn't thought about it in those terms. My point to Mr. Sousa wasn't that he didn't have a valid point. It was that we were kind of going off course into what are specific to one incident that was conceivably a building code or ordinance, building, zoning ordinance violation. And certainly, I totally understand his perspective advocating for that, but I think the proper forum to advocate for that is at the building department and not at the town council meeting. Because you all have no authority over what decision gets made with that, right? And so there's nothing we could vote on here today that would land us any closer to a resolution of the issue that Mr. Sousa's brought to the table today. And I think that his point of bringing it to the table was to get to a resolution. So my suggestion was, the best way for Mr. Sousa to get to the resolution that he seeks is through the building department and talking with the building inspector, who has purview and control over that situation.
As a private citizen, or as a counselor?
As whoever he is.
So he can do it as, couldn't he go in as Frank Sousa, counselor?
I wouldn't be asserting my position, because then, I mean, you're going to run afoul of some other issues. If you're asserting your position in that way in town government, I wouldn't personally recommend doing that. But if he's a concerned citizen that sees something, he should address it. I completely respect that, but are we going to litigate a zoning issue today at the council level? I don't, I just don't think that's within our purview here.
Well, I've always thought the purview of this council is to demand performance from the town manager immediately, and really shouldn't be talking to anyone else.
But Peter, that's, that's not really what the item D is about.
Right. I agree.
Well, that's a discussion, okay, so we could...
We've gotten away from what North Street business is, so I mean, let's bring that up in another...
We're asking for, this really is for information. So if, if the council is not, not, feels like it's not, they're, we're not getting performance, we could say to, we could draft an order to the town manager just saying, uphold town zoning ordinances more rigorously. If we can't do that now, I should walk out the door right now.
I mean, I think, I think of, I suppose you could. I don't know what his role is in upholding town zoning ordinances are, but I think that, I think the building inspector upholds the ordinances, and then the planning board is part of that, the zoning board is part of that. The town manager has obviously some impact in that, but I don't know if that's his sole role is to...
Sole role, but that's, he's like the lynchman.
Peter, we'll put this on another agenda.
Well, it's an important issue that we shouldn't get wrong.
We're really, really have gotten away from what a town manager's report should be. I don't know how this ever happened. I really don't.
Okay.
Did you have a final comment, Mr. Sousa? I'll give you the floor.
Yes, I do. What I was trying to get here was information. I wasn't trying to force anything. I wasn't trying to set a new ordinance. I was looking for information, okay? And the best of my knowledge was, to get information, we as a member of the council can't go into the department head, we should go to the town manager. And I, when this new system came up, okay, I was putting this together to call Mr. Dutton and set an appointment of the meeting in his office, one-on-one. But then I'm told, this is how we're going to do it now, because it's been changed. So maybe I misunderstood.
You did, because you could have done that exactly.
I think that's preferential.
But can I, I'll just make it very simple, if I could. I am always available to any one of the counselors that wants to come in and has a concern about virtually anything in town, whether it's employees, neighbors, potholes, whatever the case may be. I'm happy to talk about whatever the concern is. That's really my job. So, so just to give you, you know, some, hopefully some good direction, I'm happy, excuse me, happy to sit down with you as the counselor and any of the neighbors that have a concern. And then, you know, from that, you know, I can give them some guidance in how to proceed. That, that process will ultimately involve the zoning enforcement officer, the building official, and it may involve others. It may involve the agricultural commission, it may involve other boards or committees, but I'm happy to begin that process, you know, with the neighbors and you.
Thank you. I will call your office and set an appointment.
Excellent.
Okay, so items for the next meeting. I don't, now this, is this where we do this? Is this where we put things to the town manager for the town manager's report? This one, or can we, we can call during the week, but prior to the agenda being out, to say, we want something on the agenda. But I would, I would highly encourage all my colleagues, that if it's something you can meet with the town manager with one-on-one and not have a discussion here, I think, I think we should have, our meeting should be more constructive, not discussion-oriented or, you know, that's what this meeting should be more about, more constructive than, than really what we've got. All these items here tonight, I know there were a couple of good ones, but updates and things like that. So if you have something you want on the agenda under town manager's report, put it out there. But if it's, if it's something that you can sit down with him one-on-one to discuss with, I would encourage you to do that instead.
Mr. President, if we have something right now, can we bring it up? Or do you want us to do it after?
I don't think we can.
Well, I think you can bring it up for the next meeting.
Next meeting, oh, for the next meeting.
For the next meeting.
That's what it says, items for next meeting.
Right.
So Counsel George, yeah?
Okay. So for the next meeting, if we could get an update on the properties on Broad Street, Friendly's, Bowling Alley, but also, and Counsel Loesch had a great point, and I don't know how we frame this, about approaching the property owner to see if we can work out something where we can at least, for lack of a better term, dress up the property so that when people drive by it, they're not looking at an empty lot, a dilapidated building. I know that there are a lot of things going on with that property, and I know that we've got restrictions in regards to what we can enforce, but I think we could politely ask if we can get something so that when people drive through, it looks a little bit better than it's looked for the last ten years. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, this doesn't mean that you cannot submit something prior to the agenda being put out for the next meetings, because you didn't say it here tonight. But I would encourage you to think about it and see if there's something you can sit down with the town manager one-on-one to get your question answered before putting it on the agenda like that. Moving on, discussions. Standing discussions. Mitchell update, town manager, okay.
I had just a couple items. I just want to give you an update on where the Mitchell School planning stands, or the feasibility phase stands. Obviously, it's coming to a close on the July 11th. All of the materials that the committee's been working on have to be sent up to the Mass School Building Committee, School Building Authority, rather, and they review all those materials and then make a decision as to whether or not to fund a new school, or at least a portion of the new school. They make that decision by August 28th. After that, presumably, they will, since they've approved every step of the way, presumably, they will be approving the recommendation from the School Building Committee and also the School Board. And the town has a hundred and twenty days after that, August 28th date, assuming there's a positive vote in Boston, in which to make the appropriation and the debt exclusion vote. So the committee is anticipating, or will be asking this council for an election date, probably in October. That date isn't finalized yet. They're also anticipating a first reading of the appropriation and the bond authorization for August, the first, your only August meeting, which I don't remember, I'll recall the date out. But at that meeting, they're anticipating submitting first reading, obviously gets referred, and by the time it would come back in September for second reading and hearing and possible vote, will be after the decision by the MSBA at their August 28th board meeting. So first reading would come, to recap, the first meeting would come prior to the MSBA meeting, and then the hearing, and the, and the second reading, and then possible vote would come at your, one of your September meetings. You need about thirty, well, legally, you need thirty-five days between when you call for a vote and when the vote can actually happen. So you might want to just keep that in the back of your heads. The timeline, obviously, we're, I'm working with the School Building Committee on trying to finalize the timeline there. So that's, that is very roughly what the timeline looks at, like the school committee, School Building Committee, I'm sorry, met June 17th, did a review of project costs, F F and E, et cetera. And they will again be meeting, they also had two public sessions. One was an interactive workshop on June 6th, the other was a presentation on June 13th. Not terribly well-attended. The June 13th session was taped, and so presumably, that's running or will be running on BTV. And the committee has another meeting coming up... And the committee has another meeting coming up on Monday, sorry, Monday, Monday, July 8th, which will be their final meeting prior to the submission on July 11th. So the committee will vote to finalize the recommendations that they've been making and then submit their recommendation to MSBA on July 11th. So that's just a little update on where the committee is and the process and the timeline. But again, happy to, any discussion or questions?
Any questions about Mitchell update?
Just a real quick one. You talked about a first reading, a second reading, a hearing and a vote. That's merely to have the town council vote, yeah, we'll borrow the money if the voters vote for it. There's no, there's nothing done after that second reading. It's then going to go to the voters and let them decide, right?
Correct.
Okay, I didn't want anyone to be left with an impression that something was done then, it's still moving on.
Anyone else? Mr. Wood?
I just have a question that I seen schematics of the proposal, I think the most recent meeting, and it had a full, the way it was described, a high school-sized basketball court with bleachers in it. Is that meant to be a revenue generator? Because I can't imagine first and second graders who can make much use of that.
That is not necessarily, I don't believe it's designed to be a revenue generator. I think it's designed for community use, recognizing that all of the gym space in Bridgewater gets heavy use throughout the year. I think this was essentially an attempt to continue that with whatever reconstructed Mitchell School there is. I can't speak to the revenue component.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to committee reports. So are there any committees, chairman, president, that would like to make a committee report?
Chair people, sure. The Strategic Planning Committee met two weeks ago. We have, we're working on kind of a six-month goal review for the town manager. He already has his goals. It's not, we're still creating the review committee, but we have set out kind of three high-level things that we would like dates on. We've shared this with the town manager. He's going to vet that and decide if what we've set out is feasible. We'll bring it back to the council for a discussion once we get that feedback from him. So most likely our July meeting, there'll be a discussion item of the three things that we've chosen, given to get your feedback on, and then we'll move forward with kind of tracking those hopefully during the town manager's report and nothing else, as to see where he is against his goals. So that's where strategic planning is at this time.
Very good. Anyone else? Mr. Wood?
I'll cover the budget and finance. So on tonight's agenda for our budget and finance meeting, we covered a number of items. It's not on this agenda, but we had a CPA reserve accounts. We expect that to show up at our next meeting. We didn't vote on that at tonight's meeting. The first item you see under L, we're going to actually recommend to postpone that to the July 9th meeting. We have more discussion on that item. And then for 59, 61, 62, 63, and 72, we have a 3-0 recommendation for those items. Any questions?
No questions. L, legislation for action. We'll move on to order FY 19058, transfer order one-time unforeseen expenses. At their meeting held on June 10, 2019, the Finance Committee voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval. The Budget and Finance Committee met this evening, and as councillor Wood just said, the Budget and Finance Committee meeting deferred this, oh, two weeks, so we could continue our discussion on that. So having said that, I'll just pass over this and put this back on the agenda for two Order FY 19061, transfer order notice of intent municipal separate storm sewer system, MS4. On June 10, 2019, the Finance Committee voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval. The Budget and Finance Committee met this evening and provide their disposition to the full council. This measure may be fully considered this evening pending the disposition of the Finance Committee. And we voted 3 to 0 for this. Did you want to say that or did you find with that? So this does require a roll-call vote.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none?
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Order FY 19062, a transfer order funding for clearing out the town hall and Highway Barn. At their meeting held on June 10, 2019, the Finance Committee voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval. The Budget and Finance Committee met this evening and voted 3 to 0 to approve this. This may be considered this evening for a final vote. This does require a roll-call vote.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none?
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Order FY 19063, transfer order FY 19, end-of-year transfers. At their meeting held June 10, 2019, the Finance Committee voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval. The Budget and Finance Committee met this evening and voted 3 to 0 to approve this to the full council. Therefore, this measure can be voted and considered this evening. It does require a roll-call vote and entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second to approve. Any discussion?
Will the numbers add up right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there an amendment?
Excuse me?
Is there an amendment?
No amendments.
I move to accept the amendments.
Wait, was there?
Second.
On the fire line?
Under fire, in the total. And, yes.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to amend, to amend the fire department's amount.
To accept the amendments.
To accept the amendments. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
The amendments have been adopted, so now we're moving on to the roll-call vote.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
So that has passed. Now we're acting under order FY 19064. I didn't know if there's any interest that we take these all, take 064 to 072 as one vote? Or do we need to do those?
071.
I'm sorry, 071. 064 to 071 is one roll-call vote prior to, we do that, just a little explanation from the town manager what these are about.
Mr. President, these are a bit of a formality for the Elm Street project. The design shows the need for permanent easements. Virtually all of them are drainage-related easements, and so you have to formally accept those easements as part of the process.
Is there any questions about these permanent easements acceptance? So I'll entertain a motion to approve order FY 19064 through FY 19071.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call, clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Order FY 19072, a transfer order Elm Street land-taking. At their meeting held on June 10, the Finance Committee voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval. The Budget and Finance Committee met this evening and voted to approve this to the full council. Therefore, this measure may be considered for final vote this evening.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, this does require a roll-call vote.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodis?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Very good. Moving on to item M, old business. Ordinance FY 19003, zoning ordinance, amend table of uses cultivation, manufacturing, testing, recreational marijuana. The Community Economic Development and Planning Board conducted a duly-advertised joint public hearing on June 19, 2019. At the conclusion of the hearing, the Community Economic Development Committee voted 2 to 0 to recommend approval, and the planning board voted unanimously to recommend acceptance. This measure requires further advertising, therefore may not be fully considered this evening.
Motion to send to advertising?
Second.
There's a motion to send this to advertising and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Wood?
I just have a question because I can't remember. Did we finally pass the language of the special permitting process?
Yes, that had no problems.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This goes to advertising. Under new business?
I move to have the following orders sent to the Finance and Finance Committees up and through 075.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second to send orders FY 19073, 074, and 075 to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
An order FY 19076, laying out and accepting a private way, Rolling Pines Drive. Sponsor of this is councillor Chase. Before referring this measure, I have, the following vote needs to be taken. So I need a motion that the council intends to lay out the way. I need that passed by a voice vote. So in order to refer this to the, to-
I'll make that motion.
So the motion is to, the council intends to lay out the way.
Second.
There's a second.
And I'd just ask the town attorney what that means?
Yeah.
And what effect it has and does it forestall anything?
I think it's just the procedure we've always followed in terms of eventually getting it back to us and us accepting it and taking it as a way. I think you start it through just that intention and then we go to the next step when it comes back.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll entertain a motion to refer the measure to the planning board for recommendation.
So moved.
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second to refer this to the planning board for recommendation.
I prefer the county's Community Economic Development Committee if they want to look at it as well.
So there's, okay, so-
Can I make that a friendly amendment to the-
To add the Community Economic Development Committee to the planning board, yes. So the motion would be to refer the measure to the Economic and Development Committee and the planning board for recommendation.
Yes.
There's a second.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll see this again. I guess that's all we need to do with that. And it looks like we're moving on to citizens' comments. Are there any citizens here wishing to speak in the citizens' comments portion of this meeting? Seeing none, I'll move on to council comments, and I'll start on my far right with councillor Souza, since he's ready to go.
Yes, I'm ready to go. One little comment, if, we all have those new meters for our water. If somebody comes knocking on your door months and months after they put it in, it's because they can't read yours and they need to add an antenna. That's what happened to me today. So just to clarify it, they are from the department, they're just a follow-up, and it's necessary for the system to work that both the department and yourself can follow. Thank you.
Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I would just like to be the first this evening to wish all of our town residents a very happy Fourth of July celebration upcoming. And I'd actually just noted today, I believe that the 99 Restaurant is hosting an evening as part of a fundraising event to help to fray the costs of the fireworks, since that particular activity receives no public funding. My own take on that, I mentioned this, as I recall, last year as well, I would hope that no town residents plan to host their own personal fireworks display, just in the interest of safety. And otherwise, a happy Fourth of July coming to all.
Mr. Wood?
Thank you. I just want to make note, and you've already mentioned them, but I knew them through Lions, so Bob Sterns had a dedication down at the Little League, but I know him through Lions, long-term member, longtime member, probably 40 years, and I think he was probably as active in Lions as others. And he always made sure that the club sponsored a team down at Little League. I'm not sure which team it is. I assume it said Lions on the back, but it might be a good place to get membership driving up there. And then Dave Cox's passing was very sudden to us. I think he was at the board of directors meeting in May and then found out shortly thereafter about his medical condition, and it was very, very quick passage. And I, again, knew him for about 10 years, but he, I learned also, he was involved in the town. He was on the rec committee, commission for a while, committee, very active in that regard, and then, you know, other things around town. So, you know, these are leaders of the town that we lost, and, you know, it's difficult to fill the shoes, but hopefully others will step up. Thank you.
Mr. George?
Thank you, Mr. President. So just a couple of things, just to clarify for councillor Chase, actually the dine-in at the 99th tomorrow night, tomorrow night, the 26th. I was actually able to attend two of the events for the Fourth of July committee that were very well put together. I want to, you know, shout out to Lisa Buzz Curly and her folks. They are just tirelessly working hard. They're close, but they still need, they need some more support and over to get over the edge on that. For anyone that's gone to the parade, for anyone that's gone to the fireworks, for anyone that's gone to On the Common, it is just, it's a lot of work, but it's a tremendous operation. So for those who haven't bought t-shirts, hopefully you go out and buy those, hopefully you go to the 99. And hopefully in the near future, this becomes just kind of a exercise in them raising funds. Because I think this year probably was probably one of the bigger years for more people to support it. I think people are finally realizing, you know, how much goes into it. And I think also people are realizing that the town does not fund a dime of it. So I give them all the credit. So, thank you.
Question? I'll try to keep my comments brief. If I could just go after councillor Woods' comments about Bob Sterns and the dedication. I really just wanted to thank the Bridgewater Little League Board, having served with Bob Sterns for a number of years myself personally. Once you move off of the board, it's nice to see that the board did not forget about 40 years of commitment to Bridgewater Little League and to baseball and sort of beyond. The only other comment I had was, I just wanted to mention that I've noticed recently on the town's Facebook page, some acknowledgement of our town employees, and I just appreciate that, think it's a good idea, more activity, and just to kind of highlight some of the town employees that we don't see every day, that are out there, working every day, you know, trying to improve the town. So I just appreciate that activity on there.
Councillor Loesch?
Donate to the Fourth of July, and I will see you there.
Mr. Columbodis?
Thanks.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I'd just echo comments about Bob Sterns and Dave Cox. Thank you for letting me speak at the Bob Sterns dedication, Mr. President. I met Bob in 1976, so I knew him a long time. He was the president of the Little League when I started there. So it was very meaningful personally to me to be there, to do that, and I think it's a great thing for the town and for the Little League kids.